To the Ojai Planning Commission for March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Cheryl, will you call the roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Not yet.
Not in yet. Commissioner Swift?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Okay, for the Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Swift, would you lead us, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
And justice for all.
For all. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Public Communications, Lucas or Cheryl or Sherry, did we get any written or audio? I did see one email from the, uh, one of the applicants.
There were actually.
Was there anything else that came in?
There were actually two emails that we received, one yesterday from Pastor Ortland, and one email today from the Sign Committee from the Baptist Church.
Oh, from the Sign Committee, okay. I thought I'd seen a couple. Okay, but no, no, uh, no public comments for anything not on the agenda.
No.
Okay, very good. When then we'll dispense with that and go to our consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for March third. Any corrections from? Any commissioners?
I just had one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Commissioner Swift, were you at the meeting last?
No, I had some technical difficulties, so I, uh, did not make it.
Okay. I guess may, or maybe what I'm looking at that was confusing me was, oh yeah, that's correct. I was, uh, we don't have the notes from two different meetings. That's what confused me. Okay, we're fine.
But yes, in the, in the minutes, he should be among the absent, not among the eyes on the motion.
Yeah, I think that's where I was looking down at the motion and that was what threw me. Yep.
The roll call was correct. The motion.
Yeah, it was the motion.
Corrected.
Yeah.
Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll move for approval.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Lottis, you moved.
I'll move for approval.
Okay.
I'll second it with the, the change, um, under the motion to strike Swift with the eyes.
Okay.
I, oh, I don't know if I should have been doing that because I was the second, but.
No, no, that was implied, the motion implied that.
That's a correction of the motion, yes.
Exactly. Okay, good. Then I will second them.
Any other discussion? All right, Cheryl, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Quilisi.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
And Swift.
Uh, do I?
Oh, you have to abstain. You have to abstain, you are not there.
Correct. I was not there, abstain. That's correct.
You can vote if you watched the meeting.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, interesting. Yes.
Voting, yes, excellent. Good recovery. All right, our, uh, uh, next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Um, let's start with, uh, Vice Chair Nolan.
Um, I've visited the sites, now visited the sites and I've had no ex parte contacts.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, I've had no ex parte, uh, contacts, and I'm familiar with the lot line adjustment site, but, um, I will be recusing myself from the, um, project on, uh, Grant Avenue. It abuts, it, uh, I'm.
Oh, yes, right.
Biding that property.
You live too close.
I do.
And, uh, Commissioner Swift?
Yes, I, I went by and I had no ex parte contact on either side.
And I likewise have visited both sites, no ex parte contacts.
And, uh, Chair Quilisi, uh, with respect to the recusal, we'll, we'll do the recusal when we get to that item. Uh, we'll formally put the recusal on the record and when we get to that item.
That'll be fine.
Yeah.
All right. So, uh, item two, then, the lot line adjustment, what he dash zero, zero, one, Lucas, would you take us through that, please?
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lucas Cybert, Community Development Manager here with the city of Ojai. The item we have for you tonight is a lot line adjustment, um, between four hun, or fourteen hundred and fourteen twenty, uh, Arendelle Access, uh, road. And so that is, the lot line adjustment would readjust or relocate, um, a portion of the western side of the, uh, two parcels to the eastern parcel. Um, thus, readjusting about one point three acres or fifty-six, uh, roughly fifty-six thousand square feet of, um, area. Um, what that basically means is that parcel one, uh, which is now going to be referred to as parcel B, would, would go from three point nine one acres to two point six one acres. Um, and parcel two, which is one point two six acres, would go to, which would become parcel A, would go from one point six acres to two point five six acres. Um, and aerial, I think, will help in terms of understanding this, so I'm going to share my screen here and, um, show you that, that site plan that we're talking about here tonight. So, hold on one second. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
So we're talking about parcel A being reduced in size. If you see the dotted, or the dashed line here.
Mm-hmm.
That's the line.
Is actually getting bigger.
Yes, so parcel A is, is increasing in size, I'm sorry, is increasing in size, parcel B would be, uh, decreasing in size. Um, you can see the houses, there's already two existing houses on both of these parcels. There is a an existing ingress egress utility easement along the northern side of what is now going to be only parcel A. Um, that will remain, the dashed line that you're seeing along this stretch of parcel A, that then connects to that, that what's referred to as the proposed lot line, um, is a newly created, uh, sewer easement. Uh, it's a proposed utility easement, uh, twenty feet in, and width. So that's going to be included within this as well. Overall, staff is, is recommending approval of the lot line adjustment, uh, evidenced by the resolution that, that the commission has before them. Um, if any, if the, if the commission has any questions of staff, I could certainly answer them. That's the, that's really kind of the gist of what the slot line adjustment is getting here.
Any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Lottis, please.
Um, so it's probably just restating, Lucas. So, so the, um, the e, the utility easement is being drawn the way that it is to reflect the location of existing, existing utilities, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Well, I see. The utility easement is already there, but it all used to be in parcel one. Now part of it's in parcel A.
We make a slight correction to that. It's a, it's, there are already existing utilities, underground utilities within those areas. Now they're identifying an easement to protect those utilities for maintenance purposes into the future. Those, those utilities already exist. The easement itself did not exist, because if you can see the dashed line here.
Yep.
There was no need for a utility easement at the time. Um, with this new proposed lot line, now they will need some sort of a, an easement to protect and, and allow for the maintenance of those utilities into the future.
Okay, the, the, the drawing is a little bit unclear to me. The, um, it's, I, I can see that the, that what is now the easement used to be all in part of the larger parcel B, or used to be number one, parcel one. Did that easement, uh, provide, uh, both electric and sewer service to the larger parcel and went all the way out to La Paz Drive?
Electric is, is provided through, um, Arendelle, or is through Arendelle Access along the southern part here.
So that's a sewer access, then?
Sewer and gas utilities, correct.
Gas, okay. And, and that easement that runs along the side of Lot thirteen used to be, I guess, part of the larger parcel. Now it's going to be a part of the, and now it's going to be part of parcel A instead? Is that right?
Parcel A only, correct.
Yeah, so, so the, the swapping of, what'd you say, one point two six acres includes the, the sort of jagged area that's defined by that dotted line across parcel A, plus that twenty-foot wide strip alongside Lot thirteen?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Lucas, can you scroll up just a tad? Says ingress egress utility easement to be removed. Proposed twenty-foot utility easement by separate, I was just wondering about the removed, because it's already existing, right?
Yeah, so here's, so there's already, you're right, that is correct. There's already an existing ingress egress utility easement in favor of this area here. If you, if you, if you've had a chance to drive this area, La Paz Drive, you will miss this entrance, because it's so thin and so narrow, you would think it's actually potentially a part of Lot thirteen, but it is not. Um, for, you know, for, for these, both of these lots, um, from two thousand and two, um, this ingress egress utility easement served both what's now going to be parcel A and parcel B. They've since stripped that easement and now are going in favor of an ingress egress, you, uh, well, actually, it's just a, a, um, a utility easement.
Okay.
Where.
Okay.
Does that make sense? They've already got access along Arendelle. Um, both properties already have access along Arend, Arendelle.
Okay, I get it now.
It, it's basically, it, it is, uh, sure, it's, it is an easement that, um, is just the private, well, it's the, it's carrying the utilities that are only for these two properties, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
I just had a quick question. Is, um, is it the same property, is the same, uh, apparently it's the Jeff Rosen Trust that owns both parcels?
Yes.
Okay, just keep you all curious, all right.
Same trust owns both parcels, but they're separate homes on each one.
Correct, yes.
Is there, I mean, is, is there an explanation? I, I guess I'm not really sure why, why this is, um, being proposed. I, I mean, uh, the underlying reason for it. Or is somebody gonna say why? Just curious.
Just, uh, well, really.
Under, underlying reason is outside, I guess. I mean, you can, if, if the applicant was here, you could ask the applicant the underlying reason, but the, the reason it's before the commission, normally, something like this would be, uh, the, the director uh, would be, uh, be the one, be the decision maker, but because it's a ten percent increase or decrease in the area of the affected parcel, it goes to the commission. And so, really, the commission's job here is to see if it meets the, uh, meets the code and and the findings are, are made. I, and I, I get the question. I get the question. I think, I, I it's staff's, that's staff's, um, choice whether, I mean, if there's any, if they have any information, but, um, usually, I mean, if the applicant was here, that would be a question to ask the applicant.
No, I, I understand that this is really all about whether it meets the, the subdivision requirements and city, city requirements.
And the city requirements, yeah.
Yeah, and I, um, you know, I, so, so on the, um, on the page three or four, you know, um, Lucas provided the density calculations and this sort of total, the total density per acre comes out about the same, um, either way you look at it. But would we round, would we round up the, um, on the proposed, when you add it up together, they, it comes out to fifteen point five one units per acre versus fifteen point four eight? And I, does the fifteen point five one give them one more unit? Just curious.
For our code, I believe it actually rounds down.
Oh, rounds down.
Parking would round up. I think units, in this case, round down.
Okay, okay. So, the development potential is, that's how you would figure it. Um, you might, you know, at some point, if they combine both, uh, development and covering both properties, they might be able to get fifteen units per acre.
Yeah, potentially. I mean, there's, there's other factors that go into it. I mean, you're.
Oh, yeah. Um, but it's the same, whether it's the development potential, as long as you're looking at both properties is about, I mean, I, I mean, clear, obviously, it would be the same, but, um, I, yeah.
If you do, yeah, yeah, that's correct, Commissioner Lottis. It would be fifteen, um, and that would be the, the maximum that you could look at. Uh, but there's other factors that would go into play with that to, to us, to assume that they're meeting all of the development standards if they were to subdivide. That's a whole, it's a whole different, um, uh, mechanism that we would be using, still within the Subdivision Map Act.
Would you have to consolidate the two properties to get to fifteen?
Uh, potentially.
It seems to me, the more you subdivide a piece of property, the, the fewer units you're going to be able to put on it, because you you have, um, uh, smaller pieces of land to work with and you get different fractions of what's available or allowed.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's, I mean, there's several factors that we would have to look at. I, I don't necessarily get into the, to the parameters of that, because we're really just kind of looking at the lot line adjustment.
It's not relevant to our decision.
Density, though, is, is relevant in terms of looking at it from a, what could be the highest density that we could see with both of these, and that's correct, fifteen.
Well, if, if a lot line adjustment, this is in theoretical, if a lot line adjustment were in some way, um, resulting in a, uh, potential for additional development, I mean, I would want to think that through. I don't think that's happening here. But it's possible that there could be a situation like that.
I wish the applicant were here. I'm a little bit curious why the driveway of parcel A touches parcel B, why they didn't just run that proposed lot line down to Arendelle Access, so that the driveway was completely surrounded by parcel A.
Well, I, I can give you a little bit of context to that. Um, there were two things that delayed, that delayed the, the review of this. This was originally going to come before the commission, I want to say, two meetings ago, if not, maybe three meetings ago. It got delayed because of the, the utility easement that is now shown correctly, where the, where the utilities correctly are, um, as an, as existing utilities. They had identified the utilities and a, um, and, well, the easement in an incorrect location, assuming that that's where it was located at, but once they went out and did, um, assessment of where the utilities were, they realized that they, that the easement needed to be adjusted. So that was one of the reasons why it was delayed. The second reason is, uh, the proposed lot line that you're seeing here that's been readjusted, um, has been discussed, uh, quite at length in terms of where, where that line should be drawn. Um, and what they were looking for was for two lots to be as close as possible to even in size. So you're looking at, at two point five six acres for parcel A and two point six one acres for parcel B. What's interesting is when I asked the question of why not just, um, square it off, there's other factors in play here, and that, that, those other factors you don't necessarily see here on this plan. But there's trees, there's live vegetation, and some of that vegetation, they want to make sure remains on certain sides and isn't necessarily being split down the middle. So that's the reason why there's some careful consideration regarding this line. Um, the existing, um, driveway for parcel A that you see on that south side for Arendelle Access, um, that's existing currently, and there's already, uh, they take access up to there, um, predominantly. So while I certainly asked the question of why not just, uh, to square it off, they were pretty adamant that this was the, the, um, the final version that they wanted to take forward, so.
Yeah, it looks like there's a, um, it, it could be a tree canopy massing, I'm not sure, because it's not, not a legend. Um, on parcel B, on the lower left side, that they, look like they tried to go right past it. Um, so, yeah, so I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying, you know, it kind of makes sense. Yeah, the geography and what have you, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, one other thing, it does look like at the bottom above the word, above the letter A, it does look like parcel B's lot line does kind of make a sharp right, so the driveway is all on parcel A. Is that correct, Lucas?
Here?
I saw that.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. That's where you thought it wasn't, but it actually does have a jog there, yeah.
All right, yeah.
Yeah, that hard, that solid line that you're seeing here does make that jog.
Right.
Very good. Any more questions of staff?
No, it's done good.
Okay. Uh, do we have any, anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? If so, I'll open a public hearing. I guess I could open the public hearing anyway, right, Nikhil?
Yes, you can.
And then ask for comments. And hearing done, I will close the public hearing and we'll go to the commission for deliberation. Um, any thoughts on this, uh, good, bad, or indifferent from Commissioners? Ah, John, welcome.
Yeah, sorry, I was having some issues. Um, no, I, I kind of like it. I think it makes sense. It allows, uh, both lots to have kind of an equal, almost equal acreage. I think if you went down the middle, one lot might have more than the other, I don't know, or it could have impacted that driveway, so. Um, yeah, I, I don't, I don't mind at all.
I'm, I'm fine with it as well.
I think so. I don't, I, it's, it seems like a, a purely administrative exercise here. We have to look at it because of the change in lot sizes, but otherwise, it seems to be perfectly all right with me. Uh, Commissioner Swift or Lottis, any comments?
Looks good to me. No problems.
Yeah, uh, same here.
All right.
I'm good with it.
Could we have a motion then on, oh, and, um, I did, I did, uh, give Lucas a couple of suggested corrections to the text of the resolution.
Do you want to read those, Steve, for us, or?
Um, the resolution, uh, page two, paragraph D. Um, I wasn't sure about the applicability of GOV code six, six, four, one, two, and its sub paragraphs. Because it really talks mostly about being inapplicable to various projects. I don't know if, Lucas, if you had time to look into that.
I, I looked at.
Unsure about the applicability there of that particular government code section.
I think what we're, what it's really getting at with this, with the, uh, with D is that the way this is reading is it's, it's reviewed and deemed correct and in compliance with Subdivision Map Act, Section six, six, four, one, two. And really, if we wanted to, to even dive in deeper, we could say six, six, four, one, two, subset D, and identify within that, um, that it's specifically referencing a lot line adjustment. Um, and. And leave, and leave it, leave it at that, because I think the, the information there is still true and correct, because we're, we're stating that it fits within that, um, that box.
It meets, it meets the requirements of the SMA, yes.
Correct. Uh, Steve, I think the, the, the purpose behind it is that, um, it's a, it's basically making a finding that we aren't subjecting, it's not subject to the Subdivision Map Act, because it's for fewer, for fewer existing, uh, uh, it's for fewer existing adjoining parcels. And, um, you know, it fits, yeah, like, like Lucas said, some, uh, section B, so that's why we were making that finding, so that going, you know, ten years on someone looking back at this will, you know, that's a clear tell that this is less than four parcels, and so not subject to the Subdivision Map Act.
I think it's also key to note that not only is it four or less, but it's not, it's not creating a new.
It's not creating any new parcels or development opportunities.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Um, also on page three, condition, condition three, line two, Public Works Director, the works should be capitalized. And on page four, I'm sorry, page three, condition four, line two, uh, the new wording from the City Council on short-term rentals is less than a calendar month, not less than thirty days.
Good call or catch, yeah.
But other than that, it all looks fine to me. It's, uh, something we ought to be able to dispense with pretty quickly if we have a motion.
All right, Al.
Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Nolan, please.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Um, make a motion that we adopt the resolution to approve lot line, the lot line adjustment, LLC twenty dash zero, zero, one between properties located at fourteen hundred and four, one, four, two, zero, uh, Arendelle Access. Accessors, parcel numbers, uh, one, colon, zero, one, seven, dash, zero, dash, three, six, two, dash, two, three, oh, and parcel number two, which is zero, one, seven, dash, zero, dash, three, six, two, dash, two, four, oh, with the, um, changes that we're, uh, Chair Quilisi mentioned, um, the three changes. Uh, did you get those down, or do I need to repeat those? Uh, Lucas?
I have them, yes.
You have them. Okay, good. Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Second, oh.
Jake can second.
You have many seconds, all right. Any more discussion? All right, Cheryl, will you call the roll on item two, please?
Quilisi.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Yes.
Swift.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's, uh, let's move on then, and Lucas, I, I guess as a matter of course, you'll notify the applicant of the approval and then they move ahead with whatever documentation with the county is required?
Yep, recordation, that's, that's their next step.
All right, item three, a sign permit, twenty dash zero, one, two for the, uh, First Baptist Church on Grand Avenue. Lucas, would you take us through that?
Um, so I need to recuse. I'm not sure, how does that work?
So, there's a couple of ways we can do it. Um, normally, because it's a Zoom virtual meeting, um, you can either leave the room and, um, staff can notify you to come back, or a recusal, as, as they've done it in City Council, would be, um, you turn off your mic and you turn off your camera, and, um, because as, as you can participate, you can, you can listen in as a member of the public, but, and then, um, yeah, I would just note that the Commissioner Lottis is recusing, because her property is within five hundred feet. Um, and so, and as a, like, I guess, because we have two new Commissioners, I, I just want to point out, because we're going to have a few more projects coming up in the next few months, um, we're going to have lots of projects actually coming up, uh, from what Lucas tells me. Um, I would note that whenever any of these projects come up, the FPPC, the, uh, Fair Political Practices Commission, has made a rule that uh, any, if the project is within five hundred feet of, uh, your property, um, there's a per se, um, there is a per se, uh, a, I guess, uh, it's per se conflict of interest. If there's a, if it, anywhere between five hundred and thousand feet, there's a presumed conflict of interest. However, that is, and we'll deal with that if you're within a thousand. However, that is, and we'll deal with that if you're within a thousand feet. That's, that's dependent on certain factors, but five hundred is an automatic recusal.
Uh, one other thing to note for the, for Jake and John. I, if you haven't already received such a thing in, in your packet. And I know Sherry, Sherry did this for us for a while, and if she hasn't done it for you, I'm sure she will. Uh, give you a blow up of your personal neighborhood in the city with a five hundred foot ring around your property, roughly the same shape as your property, but doesn't have the sharp corners. Um, and then you will know if something comes up, whether you're in a position to have to recuse yourself. But I think, um, Commissioner Lottis, check me on this, Nikhil. If you, if you turn, if you turn off your camera and mute your microphone, you can still listen. Like any member of the public, you're just not obviously a part of the deliberations.
You're not, that's correct. So you're not part of, not, not even obvious. You're just not part of the deliberation. So it's the same way, for example, if we were inside the council chambers and the commiss, uh, commissioner left the chambers. The, 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 the meeting is actually still being piped in through, uh, on the, on the, uh, you, you can still hear the meeting. And so it's the same thing.
And so you'll know, you'll know when we're done with this item and you can come back.
Right, so after there's a vote and we move on to the next item, you can come back.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, Lucas, on with it.
Oh, well, let's wait for, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Uh, good evening commissioners once again, and I believe we actually, uh, before I go any further here, Cheryl, do we have someone in the, do we have the applicant in the waiting room?
Yes, we have two individuals in the waiting room.
Okay, let me, let me go through my, I'll have a brief presentation. I know, um, I believe the sign. Uh, the, the sign, um, individual is here, Eric, as well as representative for the church. So I'll give a pre, a brief presentation here and then we'll bring them in and I'd like to have them, uh, speak to the sign as well. But here, so what we have here is a proposed monument sign. Um, and I have visuals for this as well that we can go through and I'll share screen. It's a proposed monument sign. It's referred to as a halo lit sign. Which means that the sign itself has, uh, individual letters and or, um, design that, that, that design is then projected onto the background of that sign itself. And that's, that's really where the halo lit comes into play. They don't have, there's no, there's no, um, there's no lighting on the sides of those, of those individual letters or design piece or on the front of those individual letters or design piece. Uh, it's only to the rear of that, um, of those individual letters or design piece. And that is then splashed onto the background of the sign itself. The code itself requires, um, any, any, um, halo lit sign, whether it's a monument sign or a building mounted sign to, to come before the planning commission for review and approval. So that is, that is the reason why this sign is before the planning commission. It is not normal. This is, this is something that is definitely not normal. Uh, typically, these, these signs, when they're not halo lit, are handled on that staff level. Uh, the directors level for approval and typically ministerial, meet the standards, uh, move forward and you're approved. So this is a little bit unusual, so don't think that this is the norm. Uh, and the reason why I say this is well unusual, we only have two signs within the city currently that are halo lit. Both of those signs are mo, are building mounted signs. Um, and I think in the staff report, I identified where those are located at. But I'll just, I'll say it again here for, for public record. Um, it's Sea Fresh Restaurant, which is located at five, three, three East Ohio Avenue. And, um, you, uh, or Sunito, uh, Inn, which is located at three, oh, one North Montgomery Avenue. So both of those signs are currently existing. Both of those went through and were approved by the, by the planning commission. So, um, at that, at this point, I'll, I'll stop the presentation. I, uh, I'll also identify that within staff, the staff report, the staff's recommendation is, is threefold. But I, and I'll, I'll address what those are. There's, the recommendation is to either approve the monument sign. Um, and direct staff to come back with a, with a resolution to deny the monument sign. Sign identifying the findings of fact for the action. And once again, direct staff to return to the commission, uh, with a denial resolution. And then there is a third one referred to as approving the monument sign with modifications and directing staff to return to the commission with a resolution. Uh, which includes modifications to the sign. There is a fourth option that I did not identify in here. But I want to make the commission aware of it, and that is to, um, if at, at the end of deliberation, there is the opportunity for modifications to the sign, uh, with neither an approval or denial. Instead going, having that, that applicant go back and, um, make modifications and then return to the commission with those revised, um, or those modifications to the sign. That's a fourth option. There would be no decision. Instead, you'd be asking for a request for the applicant to go back to the, not necessarily back to the drawing board, but looking for revisions at whatever level.
And so you would just simply table the item and, um, you could act, uh, count, have the item be, um, added to another, a future agenda. Um, as you see fit and, um, if, if, if the commission does, um, want any of the, um, select any of the three items, either approval, denial, or approval with modifications. And have staff come back off with a resolution. That resolution would then go onto a consent, uh, calendar in a future meeting. And you could always pull it off consent, but the resolution, because we're going to have, we, we'd have the staff presentation here and discuss it here. Um, would go on to a consent calendar at a future meeting.
Provided that we, uh, continue it to a date certain, I think.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Did everyone, did everyone understand this halo lit? I wound up talking with, with, uh, Lucas this, this week about it. I looked and, and between his discussion and my looking at the drawings, I think I now understand what a halo lit sign is.
Could I tell you one thing? That it's not a legally noticed meeting, so it doesn't need to be continued.
I'm sorry?
It's not a noticed meeting, so it doesn't need to be continued to a date specific.
Well, that's a good point. This is a discussion item, not a public hearing item. So as a public hearing item would go, there is public notification. That's not the case with this one.
Well, that's a lot different, yeah.
Okay.
But I think it would be fair if, if it does go down that path to, to, to do a date specific, I think that's fair. That way it puts, um, yes, it puts in a parameter.
Right, okay. Anyway, any, any questions for Lucas about this particular sign? If not, we'll move on to asking the applicants to speak to the project.
Yeah, I actually have a quick question. Yeah, I have a quick question. So this isn't like the permit set, Lucas, right? This is just kind of just, uh, design review? You, Commissioner Swift, I know you're very versed in, in the, the technical pieces. So, uh, in terms of it being construction drawings as it relates to, to this, no. It is, it is merely design and meeting the, uh, development centers are laid out in the sign, in the sign, um, code. That's really what it boils down to here. Uh, but I know you're talking about the electrical plan, I'm, I'm assuming. And how that, how that will interface with the, with the proposal that we're seeing.
That would be, that would be part of a normal submission to staff for a sign permit. But this is kind of like that first one. It's, this is really a ministerial kind of decision. But there's a piece of the code that says because of this particular halo lit characteristic, we have to see it. They can't just handle it ministerially.
Yes, and I would, I would also, Commissioners, but if you have technical questions, that's the reason why the, the sign company is here as well. To, to address those, those specific questions that you more than likely will have.
Commissioner Nolan, Commissioner Trent, any questions for staff?
I'm good at the moment.
Okay.
I just had a general question. Is it a replacement sign or is it a brand new sign?
So it was my understanding that it was a, a brand new sign, but I was told recently, because I didn't see the sign, um, along Grand Avenue. But I've been told that it's a replacement sign.
Oh, okay.
Replacing a sign, but not a sign in the same place, I think.
Okay, gotcha. All right, that makes sense. I, I'm with you, Lucas. I didn't think I saw one before. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't see one before either.
Okay, well, uh, Cheryl, can we hear then from one of the applicants? You flip a coin or they can choose among themselves which, who wants to speak first?
Okay, I will allow both, um, individuals into the meeting.
Okay, great. Tina and Eric, okay, welcome to the meeting. Uh, who would like to speak first on this project?
Uh, I think, oh, sorry.
There you go.
Um, I think it'd be best to let a representative from the church start.
That would be Tina.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, welcome to the meeting. Tell us about your sign.
Thanks so much for letting us be here. Um, our sign is a replacement. Uh, the old sign is, um, a, a long, um, routed wood sign that is um, set very far back from the street and you can't, you can't see it until you pass by, um, really the whole building. It is, it runs parallel to the street. And so if you're coming down Grand Avenue, you are not able to see it until you've passed the building. So it is definitely.
You'll miss it, yeah.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, exactly. And so our, our desire was to get a sign that was closer to, um, the driveway to the parking lot. So people could see it, could, um, uh, were able to recognize it as soon as they came upon it. Because most of the traffic is coming up grand, um, either direction.
And it's going forty-five miles an hour.
Exactly, exactly. Um, the other thing about the sign, um, just so you know, and I, we did put this in a letter and it was signed. I think we had twenty-eight community members as well as the sign committee sign it. Um, but we put about fifteen months or so, twelve to fifteen months now uh, into designing this and to really being, trying to be thoughtful of the neighborhood. And, uh, the reason why we went with the halo lighting, we really appreciate that being part of the code. Um, is to reduce the candle power, to reduce the effect to the neighborhood, the residents. Because we're in a very residential neighborhood and, um, bright spotlights. Um, we just felt like that was not, uh, going to be a great option for us and for the neighborhood out of consideration. Um, we went with materials that were longer lasting. Um, if you look at our old wood sign, you can kind of understand that a little bit, but, um, I can let Eric speak to that. He knows, um, all about the, the materials. But it was a very long process. Um, we had ten people on our sign committee. And, um, we, we just really worked hard to be careful for, um, the amount of light we were putting out. And just being respectful and, uh, to our neighbors.
Okay. And Eric?
Uh, I'm actually Dave from Dave Signs. Eric is with me next to me, but yeah, I just, I'm sitting on the, yeah, so. Yeah, and we, you know, with the design process was, was pretty long with the church. We went through a lot of revisions and reiterations. And we discussed the lighting a lot. Um, and like, like you said, we came, we all came to the conclusion that the halo lighting was the, the best option, uh, for the, you know, the candle power code in Ojai and the, the night sky stuff you guys have. And, um, also, uh, we plan on installing it, uh, a dimmer, the, the ability to dim the, the sign as well. You know, so they could sort of adjust it to a, to a, you know, to a level that everybody's happy with.
Writer, when you have your Wednesday evening sessions, dimmer the rest of the time.
Yeah, and, and it's, and we plan on using a, a warm white light. Um, so it's sort of more like a, like you'd see like a porch kind of color light in a house rather than, rather than a cold white. And yeah, any other technical questions? Fire away.
Kathy Nolan?
Yeah, I've got a few questions and this is about the materials on the sign. Typically, um, well, let me step back and say that, uh, I was on the planning commission when we actually ended up adopting this portion of the lighting code. We did have, we had an applicant come in who introduced it for the first time and ultimately we ended up getting it changed. Or proposing and then city council adopted it. Um, but normally we would have materials that we could actually, you know, put in our hands and look at. I mean, you do have a really nice, um, plan in here. And I, and I also want to just generally say to, to Tina and to Dave that I, I really appreciate the time and the thoughtfulness that you've put into this, number one. But, um, can you tell me, I, on the, uh, the metal portions of the sign, of the sign that are going to be, um, painted or, you know, finished, is that like a powder coat with a matte finish? I see it says an MP. I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's a MP. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, yeah, go ahead.
MP stands, or is a Matthews paint system and it's all satin, fat, matte satin finish.
It's a matte satin, okay.
There's no gloss.
Yeah, and the other, um, thing that I was going to mention is, um, I, I don't know if you've tested this or what your thoughts are of going down to say like a twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, which is a little bit warmer than the one you're proposing. I don't know if you tested that out or, or maybe you could tell me like, how did you come up with the Kelvin that you did select?
Well, um, in, there's, there's a limited options of, uh, with LED lights that are available made for channel letters. This type of letter, yeah, and thirty-five hundred is the warmest we can go. And that's why we also, yeah, we include the dimmer with it in case it, it's, anybody feels it, it's too harsh, it can be dimmed down.
Okay, so you can't go any lower than the thirty-five hundred if you're, if you're doing this channel backlit?
Though, yeah, yeah, the way it's planned with, I mean, I imagine there may be some exotic, uh, product out there that I'm not aware of, but, but as long as I've been in the sign business, we, thirty-five.
Haven't seen it, okay. Um, all right, well, that, I may ask something else later on, but thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions. Um, just for confirmation, the lighting is going to come from the actual letters and it's going to project onto the, the Trexwood, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. And it, it, um, I, I think there's a side view in here in our plan. Um, though, if, if you're looking at the side of a channel letter, you know, go grab a channel letter for me. They, um, the lighting faces the inside of the face of the letter. So the light, the light hits the face of the letter, reflects back out of a clear backside of, of the letter. Then onto the wall, whi, which is, we will be the dark wood.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah.
So the halo is the spillover around the edges of the letter.
Correct, yeah. Sort of a soft outline around the, around.
If someone's driving by, they're not going to get blasted by the light as it's projecting off.
Yeah, not at all.
Okay, gotcha. And then another.
Now that the sign is perpendicular to the road.
Yeah.
Driver will never see the edge of the letter.
Right, yeah. Um, another quick question on section ten, uh, two, oops, okay, I'm still on the, section ten, two point one, six, zero, five. Prohibited signs, there's a, there's a letter O. Um, it says signs that obstruct or interfere with safe, efficient flow of vehicular or pedestrian traffic. I know it's kind of vague, but how far back does the sign sit from the street? I noticed that there's a drawing in here. Um, I think it's attachment B, page three or five. And it looks, I, I don't know how, it looks like it's close to the sidewalk there. I was just wondering if there's a car that's coming off out of the church trying to turn left onto, to grand. Are they going to be able to see traffic coming?
Yep, from our analysis on site, it doesn't block the viewability of traffic at all.
Right.
Um, and I believe our, it's not marked on here, but we had our setback worked out. Oh, wait a minute, here it is. Yeah, we have it at a forty-two inch setback currently.
All right.
And when, yeah, when a car is at the driveway, there's no, there's no.
Okay, all right, okay. I was just unclear on that, so thanks.
Good question.
Yeah. Yeah. So forty-two inches plus the sidewalk, I can't remember if there's a parking strip there or not. Is the sidewalk right up to the guard, up to the curb?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so you're looking at about um.
Yeah, it looks like there's plenty.
Close to eight feet off the, off the uh driving surface.
Yeah, so it should be fine. It's like there's plenty of visibility. Okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Swift?
Yeah, I got a, I got a couple questions. Um, my first one. Isn't about the sign specifically, but I'm noticing on attachment A, page two of thirteen at the very bottom. H two. Bottom left. And then I'm comparing that to the the halo backlit um pages. Earlier on, this is lights for indirectly illuminated signs shall only cast light on the sign face. And must not cause light trespass to any other location or facility. So I'm just wondering. Do we have any inconsistency with the halo lit? Because the lights really, do the lights actually shine? On the sign face? Or is it backlit?
No, it's there, the the lettering, the lettering is standing off of the face of the sign. The light is coming from inside the letters onto the face of the sign.
Yeah, and then, and then I'm, because I'm, I'm just going back and forth, because we have this dark sky. Clause here, and I I live right down the street from the Sun- Sunido Inn. And on these halo lit, the lights do shine against the backboard, but then they do go upwards. So. I'm not, I'm just kind of focusing on this dark sky thing, is if we have a sign and we're backlit halo lit, there is light gonna be going up. The face of the sign, would it make sense to put a top? Like a piece of wood or something on the top? That would extend out flush with the face of your sign, so if there was any back. Flow of light, it didn't actually hit the sky, it would actually stop there.
I think that's a good, a valid point, yeah. And that wouldn't be that difficult to build into the design.
Okay, because, because I do know there's neighbors in the neighborhood, and you know, the dark sky complacency thing is quite, you know, something.
You already have, you already have a dark wood-like surface around the edges of the sign. This would be just kind of extending it like molding?
Yeah. Yeah, it, I guess it would be the only way of actually shielding the halo lit signs by actually putting some sort of cap. To prevent the light from spilling upwards.
Right. Good call.
And and then I guess I had a couple of little things, um. And this might be more towards my question for Lucas earlier on, so I won't go through everything. Um, because it's more during the the permit process, but. I do know on attachment B, page two of five, where we actually see. Um, the details of the sign and the keynotes. Um, bottom right, we we do see a lot of NEC, National Electrical Code articles. Um, which is great, uh, but I just wanted to make sure when the 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 plan set went in is. That the parts made. That are used in this sign are actually compliant. Um, because in this, in in this DRP, we don't really have the cut sheets of that driver. If there's an LED power supply inside. How do you access that LED driver? If it fails in the future, does one of the sides of the sign have a hinge where you could open it to service it? Um. You know, we we have lots of articles about listing and UL listing, Intertec listing, you know, that tape light that you're gonna use or the driver. Is all that documentation gonna be submitted? As a full package um during that plan process?
Yeah, it it, we're a UL uh listed sign shop, so everything we fabricate has to be. UL certified and built to National Electric Code standard. That's why we put that that sort of boilerplate detail on there and. Typically, the sign comes with a service panel. Um, we usually do the side facing into the property. Uh, uh, the edge will remove for service of change of power supplies or anything in the future. And um, yeah, and we can provide all the the specs with the plans if you want them. For the, what type of LED driver and what type of LEDs we're using and all that stuff.
Okay, and and then one other note, my last one is. I'm pretty sure they do make the the light warmer than thirty-five hundred. Thirty-five hundred really isn't considered.
Right.
Warm, it's actually considered cool.
Right.
Um, because I know Sunido Inn, they're, they're probably closer to twenty-five, twenty-seven, they're very orange.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, this is kind of my, my realm, and I and I'm pretty sure you can find something a lot warmer than thirty-five.
Yeah, I know it ex- I know it exists. Uh, Sunido Inn, I built that too, that's, that's amber light, it's a colored LED. Um, and uh. There is warmer available, but for exterior signs. It's very exotic, and it it's typically used on interior architectural stuff that I've seen. More often where they go into the twenty-five hundreds and twenty-seven hundreds and stuff like that. But um, you know, if it's something that we have to explore. We can do it, yeah.
I saw you had.
Uh, for the, for the applicants edification. Uh, Commissioner Swift is in the electrical business. Uh, Commissioner Nolan is a landscape architect. And the rest of us are sort of miscellaneous, I guess. Um. Any more questions of the applicants here? Hearing none, then um. We will come back. Oh, first thing is to say. Oh, this is a discussion item, not a public hearing item, but we can take public comment if there is any. Cheryl?
There is no public comment.
Okay, very good. Then we will close this section of the discussion item. Um, and. Folks, you're welcome to stay and and listen, but we're gonna go into deliberations as a, as planning commissioners now. Um. Would you like to start, Commissioner Nolan?
I've put the individuals in the waiting room.
So if you have questions for them, they can come back.
Okay, and can they hear our deliberations where they are?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Should I start?
Please do.
Okay, good. Um, well, number one, um, I, I agree with the. Commissioner Swift, that I would like to see them explore something in the twenty-seven hundred Kelvin range. To mute. The lighting, because thirty-five hundred is pretty much, it's more on the white, cold.
Or or alternatively, perhaps colored LEDs like Sunido has.
Yeah.
Are equivalently warmer.
Yes, yeah, so it's a warmer, ultimately a warmer light, and I do like also, also. Commissioner Swift's suggestion about. Adding the the top rail or piece that aligned with the outside edge of the lettering. To diminish the glare and be more dark sky compliant. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is. Um. I think the materials are looking a little more. Uh, shall I say, maybe industrial? Because it's pretty much, it's, you know, it's the metal and even the trex. I mean, of course, you probably have to watch it, walk up to the trex to say, oh, it's trex and not wood.
Not wood, yeah.
But traditionally, um, you know, and even in our general plan, you know, there's this. Uh, aesthetic of, you know, using natural uh materials. Uh, you know, with the wood and say even stone. So as far as the sign goes on, I think they've done a great job overall in in designing it. I have nothing, you know. I don't have a problem with that. I think it's really more the lighting, if it could be warmer, and then the selection of materials. So rather than having the base be metal. These are just a couple of, you know, quick suggestions they could, or thoughts. It could be a stone base, so you know, if they used CMU or whatever, and they wanted to face it with stone or build a stone base. Just to kind of ground it, it actually would probably work better even with the local environment or in the neighborhood. Or it could be wood. Um, and I would also think about doing wood instead of the trex, although I, you know, I know the. Why people like the trex, there's probably a little less maintenance, but longevity wise. Maybe about the same in my experience, so um. And then I would just want to, I, like I said, it's really tough, because we we don't have the materials to actually like look up, you know, put in our hands. And see them, I'd want to make sure that the finish on the lettering is matte. And it's a little hard to tell the coloring, and you know, like when you print something out, sometimes it's not exactly true to what you hoped it to be. That's been my experience, but I'm guessing these are pretty close. So I would be okay with the colors. And um, and then I know, I don't know if this has to fall under the, under the signage, but I know there's a section. It says, you know, you have to landscape a certain portion around the sign. And we just be curious if that's going to be happening as well. So those are my, um, let me just make sure I didn't miss something here, but I think um. Those are my initial comments or con- contribution to the discussion, I should say.
Okay, re- regarding landscaping around the sign. My impression was that this sign would arise out of the grassy area that's there.
Okay, so maybe that's it. I just noticed, um, I'd have to find on the page, oh, attachment A, A page seven. Uh, F five about landscape uh under monument signs. But if the lawn's already there, then that pretty much handled that issue.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Trent?
Um. Yeah, I kind of agree, I think I agree with the, it just seems a lot of. Highly industrial, seems very um. You know, I don't know. Very modern, um, you know, with that aluminum cabinet enclosure on the bottom, it just seems like a lot of aluminum, you know. The letters are aluminum and the bottoms aluminum, and then you got the composite wood or the trex wood. You know, very, very modern look. Um. So I don't know, I don't know if they could explore other materials on the bottom there, on the cabinet enclosure. Uh, to make it, you know, something like a stone or, you know, something to make it a little more. Blend in a little bit better to the area. Um. And then just a quick question on, so I I think it's about an inch off, right, the the. The sign is gonna be an inch off of the woods, it's gonna be, as you walk by it as a pedestrian. You'll be able to see that gap, and you'll be able to see a little bit of light coming out of there. I'm just curious if they could put. You know, almost the same sort of idea that J-CAD, putting. You know, the strip on top, but the strips on the side too, so as you're walking by, you don't see that flood of light coming out of there. Just a, just a thought.
Uh, so a cap on the street edge of the sign as well as a cap on the top of the sign?
Well, you could, yeah, you could have been capped it all the way around, just like a little border, you know, so to speak. I'm just a thought.
It's a good idea.
Um, okay, I, uh, Commissioner Swift, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um. I think based on, we had, we had a previous church um meeting about the stairs, the metal stairs or something like that. And I I kind of real, I kind of have realized hearing everybody. A lot of stuff, um, whether it's signs or stairs with churches, is a lot of this stuff goes a very long time. Um, almost to the part to where it's completely dilapidated before it gets replaced. Um, probably because of funding or donations, stuff like that. So, you know, and supporting the church and supporting the sign manufacturer. Going with aluminum and trex, I I think they're. They, they understand this, and they're going for as long as a. Uh, you know, long-term sign as possible using these materials. Um, using CMU, um. I'm just thinking from the electrical standpoint, they they, you know, they need to have some sort of cabinet to house the wiring, the transformer. That type of stuff to actually have a cabinet to open up to service, so. Doing something CMU probably wouldn't be applicable um with this type of sign. Um, and the technology of the lights and the drivers. Um. Not saying it's a bad idea, I just would, they would have to kind of recreate and redesign where this equipment would be housed.
I presume there's an underground conduit coming from somewhere over by the church building. That would have a ninety elbow and up into the base of the sign somewhere.
Correct.
And that could be consistent with CMU, but um.
Yeah.
Be with other things as well.
I mean, I I think, I think redoing the sign and changing the position, I think is important to the church. Um. And um, I mean, I I sup-. I support them putting this in, and I I like the materials that they're using. I just think the, you know, putting that that cap on the top of the sides would be nice. And warming up the light would be preferable as well.
Okay, yeah, I I think I've identified. Four possible modifications that that we ought to talk about suggesting to the applicants. The first is the color temperature, the color or temperature of the LEDs. Um. And I would say, who who wants, who wants to make it? More on the order of twenty-five hundred than thirty-five hundred Kelvin, whether it's by color or. Whether it's by artificial color of the LEDs or by. The actual equivalent temperature.
Yeah, I think for for LEDs, twenty-seven hundred is the, is the.
That's the.
Low lowest like average color, and if you go any warmer, it's a shield, kind of like at Sunido, like what Eric said, it's, it's actually a, an amber. Like a lens that actually goes on after it, so. You know, if we said twenty-five, they would have to add some amber lenses and stuff, but I I think anywhere between twenty-seven hundred and three thousand is is considered warm. And acceptable, probably.
I would agree with that.
Uh, John?
I agree with that too, sure.
Okay, I would say then, the first thing we wanted to suggest to these, to these applicants is that they. Warm up the color that's behind these letters. Uh, how about, and the the cap for a dark sky across the top of the sign? I think we all pretty much agreed that that would be a good add to the sign. What about a cap, call it a cap, an extension of the edge? You think that should be all the way around?
As John mentioned.
They have a problem. It may have a problem on the back edge if that's where the service panel is. I don't know.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think putting on the street side would be, would be wise, just for vehicular, you know, vehicles driving by. But as it sounds, it sounds like that access panel is on that back edge, so that might be difficult if there's a. There's a backside to it.
How about we just suggest uh an extension of the edges, whether it's trex or something else? To. To the top of the sign and to the street edge of the sign, and if they want to do more than that, it won't hurt.
I like that.
I think aesthetically, they're, they're probably gonna want it to balance, but at the same time, they want it to function and have access. So I think they need to explore that as well, the aesthetic and the function of it.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, the last two things that I have. Are around the idea of more natural material, um, wood for trex. Um, my experience. From, uh, we had a townhouse in Redondo, and our next door neighbor replaced a wood. Called a wood patio. Wood deck on the front side of his condo. And it was trex, and I didn't know it. You have to get up close to the trex to know that it's not wood. I don't know about the longevity of the two materials. But um. It seemed to me that trex was okay, because passing traffic, even passing pedestrians. You're still gonna be six feet away from the sign, passing traffic, probably more like fifteen or eighteen feet away from the sign. I don't think anyone would notice. But. What, what's the, what's the code really say about that sort of thing, Lucas? Does it say no trex, or does it say encourage natural material?
Talks about, it talks about, I, and I'll go to. The general provisions of all signs, I think that's where I saw it at the bottom. Colors, design and text, which is I. See what that says.
Should be in a materials paragraph, I would think.
The color design and text. No, I don't like that. That doesn't really cover what we're talking about here. Materials, outside, somebody constructed with materials and workmanship of high quality to avoid. Materials, outside, so we construct with materials and workmanship of high quality to avoid problems, so C, or sorry. My eyes deceive me, it's E. Section ten dash two point sixteen oh three, general provisions for all signs. And then it's subset E, materials, and it reads. All signs shall be constructed with materials and workmanship of high quality. To avoid problems of deterioration and maintenance, which would give rise to unsightly and unsafe conditions. Every science frame shall be constructed in compliance with all applicable city, state and federal laws, codes and regulations. So it talks about long. Longevity of those, of those materials and workmanship. High quality as well, I think that's another key piece to that as well.
And the subparagraph there doesn't seem to apply, talking about taller signs and.
And uh, with respect to the, I think Commissioner Tr- uh, Swift's question about the longevity of the sign, there is. Uh, our code does say that signs need to be maintained in good repair and function at all times. Um, under that subsection D. So, that is a, that, that when, that is something that um, a sign owner has to actually. Do, and, and furthermore, if there, if there is an issue with the sign, the uh, code empowers the director. To uh, give written notice uh requiring any alterations, maintenance or repair.
Yeah, it can be careful. It can be either be through a complaint where we would, we would go in and research. Or if it's something that's disobserved. And, and unsightly conditioned, and it's in, it's out of compliance and we can address as well. So one of two ways.
My, my impression from my neighbor in Redondo Beach was that he had put in Trex instead of wood. In replacing the deck because his understanding was that the Trex would last a lot longer. But I don't know that for sure. At any rate, how do we feel about? More natural material, whether it's CMU or stone facing or wood?
I, I was gonna mention that I, you know, I, overall, like I like the, the design, the lettering. It's really the, you know, the materials and. Um, and I'm okay with, you know, doing the metal lettering and, and the backlit lighting. But I think it just needs to be softened and grounded, so, and I, and I do understand the need for access to um. You know, for the electric or if you have to ever change something out.
Interior of the sign, yeah.
Right, but the base of it, I, I mean, you'd, they'd have to figure it out, maybe it's got a trapdoor or something. That you can get into and get inside, but I think. I would like to see them explore doing something, and I'm just saying this, for example, like a stone base, I think it would just ground it more, it would look a little more. Natural and not as industrial by doing that. And I'm, once again, maybe come up with something different be- besides stone, but when I was seeing the CMU, I wasn't referring to just. CMU, but if they did see me, you could actually face it with stone. But how they do it, that would be up to them.
Could face it with a lot of material, even Trex, I suppose.
Well, it could be wood, it could be wood or, um, but yeah, the stone might be less maintenance, you know, where it's touching the ground, et cetera. But, yeah, they could come back to us with something more natural, I think, rather than all the metal.
Yeah, I, I agree with Kathy. I like, I, I don't mind the Trex so much, um, just the base, I think. It'd be a lot of aluminum and, yeah, I think if we could get in some sort of, even some sort of stone fascia, you know, it doesn't have to be solid stone. It can just be.
Right.
You know, some sort of just face facade or whatever, but something that just is a little more natural looking, I think would be nice.
So would we say there's a consensus to let the Trex go, but say we don't want a metal base on the sign?
I prefer the wood over the Trex, but, you know, we're just giving, I guess, right now, this is just a discussion item.
It is a discussion item. I don't, I don't think anyone's anticipating they're gonna come back. With a public hearing on a design review permit. Or a sign permit of that sort. Do you, Lucas?
No, I mean, it is a sign permit, it's not a public hearing item, so it would be coming back as a discussion. With the discussion though, for the record, um, there was not a resolution. Attached for consideration tonight, for this very reason. Of working through the materials, the look, feel, making sure it meets. The, the standards that we're talking about here, so I think that's, that's really the, the point of, of the conversation tonight. Whether it goes either, either way, or it's continued for additional information, or as, as um. Legal counsel had said, tabled until a revision is brought back um as a part of the, the discussion tonight.
And just to add really quickly, it, um, what counsel also can do, I mean, looking, I mean, I, it's clear, it's, I think. Sorry, Planning Commission, I'm sorry. My, I gave you a, an unexpected promotion, but um, so it doesn't seem like there's a, there, that, that. That counsel is leaning toward a denial, what it can do is give, um, you know, the, approve the monument sign with modifications. And so if Lucas is taking um notes of all the modi- suggested, if counsel can agree on the, or if commission can agree on the modifications. Um, they could then direct staff to return to the commission with a resolution, which includes the modifications. And trust staff to have approved those modifications and made sure that those modifications. Were made as commission required, and then it would go on the consent calendar. Um, and it would be approved, so if uh, commission doesn't wanna, you know, it would just delegate that to staff. Um, to ensure that the modifications suggested by commission are done, and then it would then go on a consent calendar and you would approve the reso.
If we were to do that, I just want to make the commission aware of this. If we were to do that, I would need to be very. As a part of that decision, I would want the commission to be very specific. About those conditions as a part of the revisions. Um, if there was to be a decision made tonight. Um, I, I will shoulder, I will shoulder getting it to the finish line from a design standpoint. Um, and then obviously a resolution coming back to this, to this commission, this body. Uh, but I want to be very, I want to be very clear that if we're going in that direction. That we need to be very precise and very clear about these conditions.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Leaving nothing to the imagination.
Okay, well, I can, I can see um. Three clear conditions, I think, that we have consensus on, one being. The uh, color temperature of the LEDs in the twenty-seven hundred to three thousand Kelvin range. Rather than thirty-five hundred, as the current design shows. Second, that there be a, a, a cap or an extension. Of the trim around the edges of the sign, at least on the top and the street side. And I would leave the rest to the discretion of the applicants. Uh, such that the spill over light neither goes to the sky nor goes out toward the street. Does that sound right to everybody so far? Um, and third, third, that rather than a clearly metal aluminum or whatever base. On the sign, that there be some sort of facing that is more natural material. Whether it be wood or woodlike or stone. I'm not sure that I care which it is. I don't know about the rest of the commissioners.
Yeah, can I catch on that? I. I just have a question. It's not technically a requirement that they have to change the material, it's. It, it almost sounds like this is what the planning commission would recommend if it was a comeback. They would have a higher chance of having this approved if they did, correct? I'm, I'm just trying to find out what.
Recommendations to the applicants.
Right, and this is to help them increase their chances of having this go through on the next. Process. And the reason why I ask is I. I, I kind of don't have a problem with the materials that they're using, so I don't really support that this third part.
Okay.
I'm just kind of thinking we're in twenty-twenty-one and we have cars that drive themselves and rockets that land themselves and. We are in a modern age and what's wrong with having a modern sign? That's just, that's just how I see it, so.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
Just to answer uh, Commissioner Swift's question, um, point, uh, just, just on the, just from a legal perspective. The recommendation would be that it, these would be these uh modifications, these wouldn't be suggestions. These would be the modifications the commission would like to see prior to um, pri- uh, and then.
Prior to approving a consent item.
Exactly, exactly, so staff would then take those, take those suggested, uh, take those modifications. Um, when the, when the applicant submits uh, the project back with the modifications, review the modifications. If they meet what the commission has required, it would go on the consent calendar.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And if not, then it would become a public hearing item?
No.
No, still not a public hearing.
Yeah. So.
It would still vote, we would either vote on it as a consent item or as a discussion item.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So, if, if commission can agree on recommendate on, on uh modifications, those, these, these would be concrete modifications. Things they would have to do, so that would, your, your resolution would be, we, we would vote to approve the monument sign. With the following modifications and direct staff to return to commission with the resolution, so when you read out the um, so. It seems like there's approval, uh, agreement on two of the uh modifications, maybe not agreement on the third. Um, with four members, you, you have a, you'd need a quorum of um. You need three votes, so.
Three votes, right.
You can do a straw poll or you can decide to ditch the third modification, um, if that's the general consensus of the commission.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Nolan.
I have a question, and just let me know if this is appropriate or not. Would, um, is it appropriate to open up the public hearing and ask the applicant? Uh, based on our discussion, if what we're potentially proposing seems reasonable. Or would they, would they rather come up with the solution and come back to us and have it, have us review it? I, I guess I'm, once again, I, I like their design that they did, and I think, you know, they put a lot of time into it. Uh, does that seem appropriate or to do?
I don't see any, any prohibition to bring the applicants back and. Talk to them, it's a discussion item, not a public hearing.
Correct, right, so you can let them back in the room and ask them for those specific questions.
Why don't you bring both of, both these folks back into the, into the meeting then?
Okay, I will do so.
Bingo. Here it is. Okay, so you've been listening to us all this time, I presume. The uh, the color temperature or otherwise uh warming of the LEDs, does that look like? An insurmountable problem for you?
Oh, yeah, we, we can, we can work with that, that's not a problem.
Okay, and the uh, extension of the edge material, whatever it turns out to be. As a cap for dark sky and at, at least on the top and on the, the street facing edge of the sign. Is that a problem for you?
From my perspective, it's a good idea, it'll, we can frame this, the whole sign with something.
And that won't interfere with your service panel on the back edge then?
No, no, not at all. We'll make, we'll make it so it's a removable feature on one side.
Okay. Now, um, as far as uh, the. The uh, base of the sign, it currently is proposed as. Painted aluminum, is that right? Powder coated aluminum or something?
Yes, yeah.
And, and the color is. Dark brown or, no, it's a light color.
Yeah, it's a gray tan type of color, like a camel.
Gray tan, okay. If we asked you for more ma- for more natural material, would that be a problem?
Um, I don't think it would be, uh, I just, of course, I have to get everything approved by my client, the church first. But what I'm thinking is, what might be a good solution is, maybe we come back with two or three options. That the church is happy with, and then we resubmit to you guys and let you guys decide what you'd like to, to see out of those options, does that? Does that work?
It certainly works for me. I, I don't want to put you to too much trouble here, because overall, I like the sign. Uh, we just want to make sure that it, it looks like something that you might find in a residential rather than a commercial area. I think was my general sense of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that okay with you, uh, Jake, John, Kathy?
Yeah, I personally like, I, oh, somebody else was speaking, sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, um, you know, like I said from the beginning, I know that they, you know, thoughtfully put a lot of work in it. And once again, I think the, the, the sign is great, and I, I actually wanted to say, I can tell that you really thoughtfully thought of this because. You've got the mountain range with the moon, and I know when you look to the east, especially from the church there. You know, you get this great moonrise, so, you know, it's, it's connected to the, to the valley, which is very, uh, very nice. Um, but I also, because you have spent so much time and you have, you know, listened to our discussion. I, I personally, I like the idea of, of giving you the opportunity. To, you know, go back to your committee and, and explore a couple ideas. I don't want you to have to, you know, over spend a lot of time and overdo it. But I, you know, I feel like you're on the right track, and to me, that would be a good. Solution if it worked for you, meaning the applicant.
So if that, if that works for you, then, uh, Lucas, do you have enough of a sense of the. Consensus of the commission to go ahead and put together a resolution with, with. Two modifications and one uh, multiple choice that we'll hear back from the applicants?
Yeah, I mean, I, I can put together a resolution. The third point is a little bit unclear for me, only because. The options sound like they could have natural uh materials, maybe as the base, and then.
Right.
And then I'm, I'm, I just don't know what other options you would end up having beyond that.
My, my personal feeling is if the base is, is uh painted metal so long as it's maintained properly. Um, and it's, and it's a compatible color with the rest of the sign, I don't have a problem with it. I think probably the same is true of Commissioner Swift. I'm not sure about Commissioner Trent.
Oh, with painted metal? Um, I mean, I'd prefer not, but yeah, I'd, I'd like something a little more natural. I just think it blends into the residential area a little bit better, not so commercial, yeah.
So Steve, do we, I mean, at this point, can they just, you know, come back, which would be um, what option would that be um?
It would be the fourth option.
Fourth option, exactly.
That isn't shown.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be the fourth one, so we're not, we, we could, after we review, when they come back, then that's the time to do the resolution, I believe. Doesn't that make more sense? Because we're, we're giving them some, an opportunity to come back with a redesign, so to speak.
Might I offer a suggestion then?
Yes, please.
What could happen is that we could, we could have this return date specific. By doing that, it's putting, it's putting um, staff working with the applicant, with the sign company and with the, with the church. And having them go back, not necessarily to the drawing board, but just to clean up a couple items, it sounds like.
Yeah.
Then bring back a revised drawing. At that point, I would also bring back a resolution. That covers these three points um, that we're talking about here tonight.
So, Lucas, yeah, so what it would look like is, eh, rather than having three options, it would be simply approve or deny. And the approval, and if, if you approve the, the staff recommendation, if, if, you know, depending on what the staff recommendation is. You would just approve the resolution then, so it wouldn't go on the consent calendar, you would just approve the resolution at that very meeting, so it doesn't actually change the timeline. Um, because this was already envisioned as a two-meeting process, so.
Right.
Uh, but it would come back then either as, as a consent item or a, or a discussion item, and what would. Determine which of those it would be, Nikhil?
Um, it would come back as a discussion item, because you're asking them to come back with uh, your council, uh, commission is making a decision. Um, on the, they're gonna come back with more information, including the, the, the design modifications, and then. And then you could then have a public hearing on those, you close. And then you could then have a public hearing on those, you close a public hearing, have a discussion on those, and then choose to vote on a, on a resolution, either approving the. The, the uh, the monument sign, um or denying the monument sign, so.
And, and on one of these three changes, the sign company has said, yes, we can come back with some variations on a theme. If you will, and we'll have a chance at that point, uh if, if the variations are all in the resolution. Uh, one, one clause that says A or B or C, then we could, we could choose as a commission at that time?
Yes, yes, and that would simply be, we could just make the edits on the reso that, right there.
Okay.
It'd be editing on the dais, basically.
By the way, Nikhil is our, is our uh city attorney. In, in fact, for this evening. Um, does that work for you, Lucas?
I think that wor- that certainly works for me. Uh, the, I'm just looking at the next. Meetings that we would have would be April seventh.
I think.
And then April twenty first.
Yeah.
Those would be the next two meetings that we would potentially have. There's a little bit of a gap, we have an extra week for the first meeting in April, just April.
Right, it's three weeks to the, three weeks to the first April meeting.
Yeah.
What uh, what sort of time um Tina or Dave do you think you need to, to uh? Make some decisions internally on this? Is three weeks enough time, or would you prefer five?
Yeah, as soon as we can get it, yeah, the sooner the better for us, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I can get, I can get some revisions done uh by next week, and as long as the church can look them over and approve them.
Absolutely.
And, and work with, work with Lucas, and we'll uh, we'll take this up at the April seventh meeting then.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
You, thank you.
You have enough, Lucas, that we can move on?
Yep, we got enough pieces to this puzzle now.
All right, excellent. Let's go to item four on the agenda. Uh Planning Commission tentative agenda for future meetings.
Yes, so there are, there are actually two items that we have um in the hopper. That have gotten to the point where they're ready to move forward. Um, we were actually looking at potentially bringing in the discussion item. Uh, that tree, the tree permit to this meeting, um but there was just, just ran out of time to get it, to get it um formalized. And, and to clean up a couple things here before, before it comes forward, so. These two items are ready to go, so expect these two items to be on the agenda for April seventh, and potentially this, this item.
Now we'll have the church sign as well.
Yep.
Um, when you say create a community tree management plan at Creekside Village, that's the. The condos on the north side of thirty-three, is that right? Right near the Y?
Yeah.
Yes.
But uh Kathy, what does a? A community tree management plan look like, what's in it?
Hold on.
We have to wait, we can't get into it tonight.
Yeah, let's not get into it tonight, I look forward to that discussion on the seventh, just know that there'll be plenty of information and plenty of discussion at that point.
Okay.
I just know that these, this is the, these are the placeholders, so certainly these items that you're seeing for April seventh are, are ready to go.
Excellent. I did have one other question. Uh, the other day, as my wife and I were walking around the town, we were, we were up near the top of uh. Montgomery and Daly, and ran into uh Councilmember Haney. Who was talking with a lady whom he introduced to us as uh Ms. Weber. Uh, who was purchasing the Christian Science Church building. At Oak and Blanch. Uh, to convert it into a residence. Uh, is that something that you expect to have come before the planning commission, or is, is what they're doing a ministerial decision?
We talk.
We, we can't, we can't discuss specific uh projects, so it, um, I think the better question perhaps is that. Uh, a, does a conversion require, I mean, I, I, I don't think staff can maybe comment at this time without knowing.
Does a conversion of a building on PL, PL zoned property to residential? Um, will that require our resolution recommending a zoning change?
As long as we are, yeah, as long as we're moving from future agenda items into commission member reports.
Oh.
Actually, that we're, we're careful in terms of where this information is falling. I know we've had.
Very good.
We've had this situation come up before, so I want to make sure.
Alright.
Saying it's, and, and true to how, to the reason why some of this information was, has been included.
Gotcha, okay. My apologies. Let's uh, if there are no more questions about future agenda items. Looks like we'll have a lively meeting on the seventh. Uh, let's move on to commissioner comments then. Anyone, you have mine, can, can we uh answer that hypothetical now?
So, if we go into hypothetical regarding this, I don't want to get into the details on any specific project. Uh, hypothetical, any sort of a zone change or general plan amendment um that would be brought forward. As a part of changing a use. Uh, that would become, it, this, it would certainly come before the planning commission as a recommendation body. And then to city council for final.
So we're talking a public hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just curious, um, any other commissioners have some comments? Uh, Commissioner Nolan?
I'm good for the moment.
Okay, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, yes, I just, I just want to um make some general observations about the general plan visioning workshop, which was last Wednesday.
A week ago.
Two hour session. Um, I really want to thank staff and the consultant for providing that forum for community in- input and comment. And um I just, but I did have a couple of general observations, and, you know, I'm always the critic, so don't take it the wrong way. Uh, but just some things that I noticed. Um, I feel that participation is still lacking representation from kind of the whole community. Um, you know, while the input I thought was really, really good. Um, it was definitely weighted to people like me, you know, old and retired, and um. Uh, I would really, I, I don't, I, I, you know, it's a difficult thing to do because um I think we need to look for. Uh, or outreach, do outreach to young families with children of basically any age, and also just young adults. Um, they were underrepresented, they're the, they're the voices of future, and um. I, uh, if we could just think about how to do that, pardon?
How do you get people to involve themselves? Do you have any ideas on that?
I, you know, whether we could work with the school district, um also the private schools. Um, because people send, you know, they're sending their kids to both um cut, types of schools. Um, maybe churches, churches and schools, if we could try to um. You know, get some messaging put out, inform them, and then try to have a um. Uh, messaging put out by them if they can understand, you know, sort of what the, what the program is. Um, so anyway, that was just, I just, you know, I have no answer, but I'm just wishing that we could. Find a way to uh do more outreach with that. Um, and then it was a very, it was so brief. Um, that uh I felt there was, well, when we broke into the workshops, we had an opportunity for comment, so, but two things, I um. You know, it was so brief that I felt like everybody basically kind of gave like a, you know, a little two-minute opinion statements. Which was fine, but um so hard to um. I wish we could have time to go further, um in terms, especially in terms of allowing interaction and discussion, besides just everybody just making a statement, and then it gets recorded on a. On a board, because I think there's value with give and take. Um, and um I. In the fut- uh well, we're gonna get past the visioning point real soon, but. If there could be some, uh some more explanation of what visioning is all about, but it's more at the. Ten thousand, twenty thousand foot level versus very, very specific things. Um, and um my last comment. Um, I really want to convey to the consultants and staff that the need, we have a need um. Uh, for the general plan um policies that will, will be developed to have action language. And I plead with the consultants, no matter, no matter who they hear from, please do not use words like. Uh, where feasible, wherever possible, or encourage, or seek, or should. Because that just leads into gobbledygook. It, it, if you want strong, clear, definitive. General plan policy language, use action words like um, and just examples, protect, prohibit. Um, include timeframes, um use shall, not should. And um I just, the policies are, the general plan policies are the heart of the general plan. They're so important to um setting up the, the vision or the, the, the um. The foundation for which the city makes its decisions. The decisions are supposed to be made on a rational basis. That are communicated to the community by, and the decision makers by the general plan policy, so it's just super important. And um the language is super important, so, but I appreciate, I appreciate all the work you guys have done so far, and the consultants, and uh. I'm just putting, putting my stake in the ground out there for what I'm hoping we're going to achieve.
I'd love, I'd love to back you up on the, on the action language. Uh, I wrote proposals for a long time. And we used to kid people about having horse pictures. You'd have a picture of a horse and the caption says horse. Not very informative, but if you talk about what the horse can do. Or what an advantage it would be to have a horse like this, then you're getting a message through. That's, that's much more useful than just the caption horse. And uh, I would, I would also like to thank staff and the consultants. For listening as carefully and as patiently as they did to everyone in every one of the, the breakout groups. I, I felt like. They were, they were seriously listening to us and wanted to do the right thing in coming up with a general plan update, so. I appreciated that. Yes, Commissioner Nolan?
Yeah, I also attended, and I wanted to say thank you to staff, and I agree with Commissioner Quillissey and Commissioner Lottis. And I'm hoping they were, were recorded. Um, the um person who was taking notes during my breakout group. Um, now that they were doing a good job, and I, they were capturing the essence of a lot of what was being said. So a lot of it was kind of that ten thousand feet above view. But was actually, what was written down was, you know, right on the ground. And not the essence of what was happening. So I hope that they go back, I'm not sure if, you know, if they were recorded, but they go back and they listen and. You know, uh, make sure they garner some of the jewels that were said, that I noticed when I looked on the, the uh described. Notes were not there, and then there were some things that were missing that didn't get down, and I understand that happens because you're trying to go quick and you're trying to get everything down. So, I'm not saying it against the person.
That's why you record it, so you can go back and listen.
Yeah, I just hope they, they do that, and uh, yeah, and I agree about, uh, you know, right at the beginning, they, they took a poll on the age group. And I happen to be an elder group, but, you know, I said in my breakout group, I go, okay, yeah, I'm, I'm there, I said, but I, when I moved here, I was in my twenties. And I raised my hip here, and I go, I still, you know, I think and I remember all the things that I wish were, were happening here, were part of the city, but. That we need to be really inclusive with age diversity and, 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 you know, equity. So um if there is a way to reach out further into the community, um, you know, there, we can't force anyone, nor do we want to have them come. But some people, of course, may not know about it, and if we could reach out, more people may become aware and partake, participate, so. But thank you, yeah, I'm, I'm just excited that we are having the workshops, that we're doing it, and that we have an opportunity, and I, and I do agree about the languaging. Yeah, and the policy is super, super important. We don't want it to sit on the shelf, or we don't even want, want to have it come back to a commission. Or council and, and look at something, go, that's really ambiguous, what does that really mean? So clarity is good in definition. Thank you.
Commissioner Trent, yes.
Yeah, just a quick question, because I wasn't able to attend. Um, are they gonna have another one of these, or are they gonna, is this the last one, or how's that looking out?
There'll be two more.
There's two more?
Yeah, there'll be two more opportunities to um, to get feedback, but I. Just, just so the commission knows, we have been, been trying to reach out to those younger groups. It's interesting, you would think. Oh, virtually, the excuse tends to be, I've got kids, I can't, I can't go to the meeting like this. You're virtual, you're thinking. This is the perfect opportunity, you can mute yourself, your kids are crying in the background, right? You gotta, you gotta do the parenting thing, right, for, for a moment, and then come back, right? Like, so I agree, the school district idea, I, I love that, we've, we've reached out to them, we'll continue to reach out to them, hopefully. By, by continuing to, to send that information now, eventually get through. Uh, I know they're, they're certainly sharing that information as well.
And, and I think you guys, did you put something in the paper as well? I think you did, didn't you?
Oh yeah, put something, yeah, there was a lot of outreach for this.
Yeah, you know, but the paper, to be honest, the paper is read by people in my age group. I, I, I don't, from what I know, I don't not think that the young, young fa- younger families, younger generation reads the, the newspaper. I mean, the local newspaper.
I read it online, but.
Read it.
Well, I read it, but you know, I, I read everything, so.
Yeah, we're using social media as well, I.
Oh, that's good.
There's some things that, and we're, and I think what happened um this time, we were weekly sending out blasts to, to social media. So, um, but yeah, there's some other strategies you gotta look at to try to get to that younger crowd.
The other thing you might think about is the uh, the Chamber of Commerce. I didn't detect that there was anyone. In my breakout group that was a business owner. And so maybe you can get the Chamber of Commerce to encourage all of its members to attend one or both of the next workshops.
And that wasn't, that we, we sent information to the chamber, and they, they sent a couple different blasts to the.
Yeah, they did send a blast, because I'm a member of the chamber, yeah, I could get those.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Good, I'm glad they're getting out, yeah, well, I was seeing them go out anyway, so I was assuming they were going to that group. Uh, but yeah, no, I, we appreciate all of the information and the feedback at this point, we're. We're still looking at creative solutions to try to bridge that gap, because you're right, there, it certainly. It peaked at a certain age category, and then it's a stark drop off. Um, at those ages where you typically have, have families, so.
Well, yeah, the, the front page of the Ojai Valley News is hard to read on my smartphone, so I may just not do it at all. Right?
Yeah, well, I know that uh people are usually attracted to things that are, you know, shocking or changes, you know, people want change. So is there anything that from that discussion that has like a been some, will, will be some sort of change versus what we had in the nineties, like? You know, obviously, we're a tourist town, and you know, we're small, we like open spaces, we don't have buildings that are too tall. We have kind of Spanish themes to our architecture. I mean, is there anything that deviates drastically from that kind of model that people are talking about?
Hmm, I don't know that I can, I can say with, with definitive, that it's so stark to say. Uh, everybody that was in one group talked about, I don't know, four-story buildings throughout the downtown district, like something drastic.
That's pretty drastic.
They're saying that. I put, I, I bounced around from, from um, from, from group to group to kind of get kind of the sense of, of uh. Cause there's five different groups that were speaking.
Right. Yeah, I mean, if we took the approach of, you know, enticing people with like a little, you know, message in the paper or somewhere. Uh, social media, whatever, like, do you want four-story buildings in downtown Ojai? If not, come to the meeting. uh, social media, whatever, like, do you want four-story buildings in downtown Ojai? If not, come to the meeting.
Yeah, I, that's interesting. I'm not saying.
Sidescrapers in downtown Ojai?
We have, we're looking at strategies like that. Maybe not quite as drastic as what you're talking about, but something to draw the attention of even the younger crowd.
Oh, yeah, do that, do that on April, April first.
April first.
Yeah.
Just from a legal's perspective, I think, um, if it's a public meeting, so we, we should, um, perhaps not, I mean, well, we can, we can, I, I don't think the, the law, there would be, because it's a public meeting, I mean, I, I suppose we couldn't say that if you don't attend, the city's, uh, is about to get annexed to Ventura, um, but you could, yeah. But you could, I mean, yeah, they're, they're, yeah.
All your, all your water is going to go to Ventura if you don't show up.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Swift, anything that you'd like to comment on this evening?
No, I thought tonight was productive and right to the point, and, um, very productive.
Um, back to the workshops, one thing I suggested in my breakout session was that a common characteristic of small towns, and you see small-town environment or, or whatever throughout our general plan, is that the central business district is mixed-use, like our VNU. Our C-one district is currently not allowing any residential use whatsoever. And I'd like to, I would like to see a change that way. Um, and I brought up, and Commissioner Nolan will re, will remember this, there was a, there was a, uh, concept review for a project across Bald Street, across Bald Street? I think across Bald Street from Sea Fresh. There's a one-acre plot there. They wanted to do mixed, uh, there was going to be a deli and a real estate office and something else retail, and a bunch of uh, second-story residences.
Right.
In effect, in, on that one-acre plot.
Mm-hmm.
They never came back, and I'm not sure why, but it would have required a zoning change.
Right.
Or, or some kind of variance or something, I'm not sure, to allow them to put residences on a piece of property that abuts Ojai Avenue. And, um, I mean, I, I have relatives, my wife has relatives from the East Coast, and you see an awful lot of that back there.
Steve, I brought the same.
Retail business with a residence above it.
Yeah, so, so I mean, um, you know, the general plan, well, oh, sorry, what?
Not sure how radical that is, but.
You know, the, but the, in terms of options, uh, or when we discuss, which we will need to discuss, um, ways to provide more, uh, you know, some more housing, I mean, we, you know, I think we kind of have a ceiling, but, uh, you know, we could look at, the general plan could talk about looking and evaluating infill properties, allowing mixed use, and encouraging um, residential use on the second floor. Um, you know, I can't really see that in like the arcade, but I think there's infill properties, and there are prop-, if we could, um.
That would be a big change to the arcade to make it two-story.
But, but that is like, that is so, uh, relevant, um, for the general plan to start talking about that kind of the problem-solving and how, you know, ways we can, uh, where can we talk about putting in some more housing, and how can we do it, and where can we do it, and how, and, uh, and anyway, and I, that's, that's a, that's a great example, Steve.
Okay, and just from a legal perspective, the housing, that, the general plan does contain a housing element, which, um, and we're, right now, we're going to be in the sixth cycle of the, um, region, regional housing needs accommodation. Um, and, uh, you know, the, the general plan is meant to address, you know, the city meeting, it's, uh, it's called the Reno number, and so the city meeting, it's Reno number, so that, that is part of it. Yeah, and so.
Okay. Uh, any more comments from commissioners? Uh, I would like to ask that, um, for the next agenda that we uh, include again, unless, unless the city council's policy has changed, I'd like to see an item informational or whatever at the end of the agenda for, uh, city council liaison comments, if city council liaison attends the meeting.
Yes, apologies, that should have been added as a sixth item, that's a standing, um, whether.
Could be a standing item, I think, yes, okay. Thank you. Anything else we want to cover this evening?
Just one thing, just soapbox for a moment, um, regarding the general plan update and the vision and workshop that took place last week. I encourage, when we, when we have our second workshop, I encourage, um, every commissioners to, to attend. I know we're all, we're all busy, uh, the virtual almost allows, uh, anybody to attend at a, at any time. And that's to, to Commissioner Lottis's, um, point. Uh, I mean, I've got younger kids as well, and when they start acting up, or when they start tugging on me and asking questions, I immediately mute. And deal with the situation, right? Uh, I don't have that here, I'm in the office tonight, so it's not, it's not an issue, but I can totally appreciate, uh, the difficulty that exists there when you've got, when you've got littles that are tugging at your, your pants, or whatever.
But there's no travel time to the meeting either, so.
There is zero travel time, and there's no need for.
And more time with the kiddos.
Yeah.
And you can wear pajamas.
Maybe that's how I, maybe that's how it ends up being Zoom, babysitter included, virtually. Clever.
Well, that's a good.
Work on that.
Okay, hearing no other items of interest to the commission tonight, I thank you all, and at seven fifty-eight, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much. See you in three weeks.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve, everyone. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.